I called the City of Carthage Council meeting of August 26, 2025 to order. Chief Martin, invocation please.
Family Father, we gather tonight. We thank you for our health and our ability to be here. We ask your blessing and comfort on those who may be suffering or in need. Father, examine our hearts, fill us with your wisdom so that the effort of our work here will bring glory to you and you will.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, the clerk, please call the roll. Miranda?
Peterson?
Present.
Gilpin?
Present.
West?
Present.
Perkins?
Present.
Thorne?
Present.
King?
Present.
Snow?
Here.
Shram? Wells?
Here.
All right, I know you've all had an opportunity to read the minutes of our 12 August session, so I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I move we approve the August 12, 2025 minutes.
Second. I have a motion as second to approve the minutes of August 12, 2025. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. We will now move on to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the council, please move to the podium, state your name and your address, or the business you represent, and please keep your comments limited to five minutes.
Hi, good year. I'm Regina Wells. I live at 2026 South Maple, here in Carthage. And this is in regards to the Lime scooters. A few weeks ago, I was in Walmart, and there was two young preteens on those dodging cars at Walmart parking lot. I've been reading also on what's going on in Carthage. A lot of people are having problems. During Marion Days, there was a lot of people riding those on Garrison, Grand, and Central. Or, yes, Central. And they were supposed to be monitored. They weren't. A lot of people are complaining about how scary it is, them being left and set for days at a time. And I think I agree with what Mr. Perkins said a few weeks ago about those scooters. I think they're more danger than what they're worth. People are not buying groceries and using those to take groceries home. These are for kids entertainment. And that's my stand in the public. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to reports of standing committees, budget weighs and means. Alan?
Budget weighs and means committee is currently between meetings. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be September 8, I believe is the date, here in council chambers.
All right. Insurance audit and claims. Derek?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, the Committee on Insurance Audit and Claims met. A little bit of a lighter agenda than a couple of our past meetings. But we approved for council this evening, the claims report, which you'll see shortly. And then we also passed for council's approval, the employee records policy, as well as the whistleblower policy. I won't go into extreme detail, as those will be seen at our next meeting for first reading and new business. But I think the committee, after many changes and revisions and really working through it, I think our committee has presented, has something to present to council that'll be workable for all and serves the best interests of employees, the city, and all involved. So, next, in the two weeks from now, you'll see those for discussion, in which I'll detail much more. Other than that, we had brief staff reports, and that concluded our meeting this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public safety. Alan?
Public Safety Committee met August 18, here in council chambers. I have a few things on our agenda. The first item, we had Sally with Vision Carthage come talk to us about their upcoming dumpster day. Wanted to let everyone know that dumpster day would be October 4. And it's going to be down at Fair Acres, in the parking lot at Fair Acres this time, rather than Memorial Hall. Also, a project of theirs, Restoration Carthage, is September 27. And they are sponsoring a citywide cleanup day on October 11, from 8 to 10. Anyone that would be interested in meeting, I believe they're going to meet in Central Park, and then they get trash bags and go pick up trash prior to Maple Leaf. So, those are some important dates, if anybody's interested in volunteering with Vision Carthage. The next thing we had, Julie Reams, was there to talk about road closures and security for Maple Leaf, and we will see that tonight in Resolution 2100. Rather than me sitting here for the next 15, 20 minutes, making motions to close roads and allow this and allow that, we just put it in a resolution, kind of like what we've done for Marion Days in the past, and we'll just pass that resolution with all those road closures. We also discussed a donation from Eminem Record to the Police Department of a utility trailer, and that's on the agenda tonight in Resolution 2099. Our next meeting, we are changing the date from the third Monday next month, because we will be at the MML conference. Our next meeting will be September 22, which will be the fourth Monday at 5:30 here in council chambers. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Public Services, Vice Chairman West.
Okay, this is the first committee meeting I've had to report on, and, you know, this is strange that I get the biggest agenda that I think we've ever had. But anyway, we met at August 19, here in council chambers. The first item that we discussed, Andrew Jinks was here with the Joplin Disc Golf Association and discussed a proposed redesign of the Disc Golf Course at Kellogg Lake. Mr. Jenkins, Jinks, I'm sorry, explained that the redesign would improve the safety by rerouting the course away from the high-traffic areas and the park, while also creating a beginner-friendly layout. The plan includes the addition of putting course and driving, putting course and driving range. The Disc Golf Course will be installed in phases, beginning with the 18 hole course, and then installing the putting course and driving range as labor and funds allow. At this time, I would like to make a motion to accept the Disc Golf Course designed to be installed in phases.
I have a motion to install the Disc Golf Course as described.
I'll second.
A motion as second. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Derek?
Mr. West, I was just going to ask, does that have, at this time, a budget to number to it, or is that just the preliminary design phases?
It's my understanding that the budget's going to be by phase, depending on.
The baskets have already been purchased, and so the only thing that is needed in the budget which we carry forward is the cement and, you know, some lumber to form the concrete.
Thank you, Tracy.
Any other discussion? Alan?
So, most of you probably know I'm quite the athlete, and my son is quite the avid Disc golfer, and I've gone out and Disc golfed with him several times at several different courses in the area. The Joplin Course over at McClellan is way too difficult for me. I usually just caddy for him on that course. There's one down at Fairview School that's not really a course. It's got baskets that you can throw to, and it's pretty fun. And I believe that, you know, pickleball has caught on. I believe Disc golf is going to be the next sport that is going to be growing. So, I think it's good that we're doing it. I think we have to do it in phases, because it is going to be a little bit of money to get those tee pads, the concrete tee pads installed, but I think it'll be good to have something like that here in Carthage. Thank you.
Okay. And exactly what does a Disc caddy carry?
Well, a Disc bag. I mean, you don't understand. You have to, they have drivers, they have mid-range discs, they have putting discs. So, you have to have like 15, 20 different discs in your Disc bag.
Okay. Well, you learn something every night.
How do you actually play it?
You throw it, it's like a frisbee, and you just throw it at the basket.
The basket might be 250, 300 yards away, and you throw, and then you pick that one up, and you get a different one, and you throw until you end up getting it in the basket. And as an aside, a part of the discussion, my son-in-law lives in Kansas City, and he's big into Disc golf, plays tournaments and all that stuff, and every time he comes down here to visit, he loves to play that course.
There's actually an app even that you can get that tells you, like, my son, when he comes home, he'll look and see all the courses and how far it is for him to drive to which course to determine where he's going to play. And he'll play, if he comes home for a weekend, he'll play two or three different courses.
Okay, great. Any other discussion?
Speaking of the interest, you mentioned about it. One of the things that I was impressed is there were several players here when they were making the presentation, and I think they're from Joplin, and they're very anxious for this course to get finished and completed. So, we'll drive them over here.
Okay, thank you. Derek?
I would just quickly dovetail off Alan in that my college, small college campus in Kansas City had a course on campus, and I found it very enjoyable, so much that it may have deteriorated my golf game that I was on scholarship for there, because I was too busy on the Disc Golf Course. But I think that would be a great addition, a great addition for us. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, Ray?
Moving on just now to the second item. Jasper County Youth Fair was asked to propose names for the currently unnamed roads surrounding the fairgrounds in Municipal Park. The proposed recommended names are Fairway Drive to connect the golf course, Clover Lane on the north side of the concessions, and Livestock Drive for the road to the east, and Exhibitor Lane for the road south of the barns. There will be a 30-day public comment period before the street names can be considered by council. Item three. The Jasper County Youth Fair requested permission to pursue a grant for improvement or replacement of the poultry barn. Committee approved the grant application, and no action is needed further by the council at this time. Fourth item. The Carthage Area United Way Golf Tournament will be held in Carthage Municipal Golf Course on Saturday, September 20. Scoopit Food Truck, that's the ice cream store, would like to set up to serve ice cream to golfers and volunteers. At this time, I would like to make a motion to allow Scoopit Food Truck to set up inside Municipal Park on September 20 for the Carthage Area United Way Golf Tournament, and this is free to the participants.
Second. I have a motion as second on the table to allow Scoopit Ice Cream to set up in Municipal Park to serve free ice cream. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
Okay, item five. Tyler Markham presented a proposal to host monthly senior shamble golf tournaments, with revenue to be split between green fees, cart fees, and pro shop fees. This, these tournaments would be held on the first Monday of each month to avoid conflict with other area senior shambles, and would work around the golf course maintenance schedule. At this time, I would like to make a motion to accept the senior shamble golf tournament with registration review to be split between green fees, cart fees, and pro shop revenue. And as an aside, before I look for a second, Mr. Markham is under a bit of pressure, because he would like to get one in this year before having to wait to spring to start it and see how it's going to go. And he, if we pass this tonight, he's looking to do one on the second or third week of September, and then be off through the winter months, and then resume again in spring. So, motion on the table.
A second. I have a motion and a second to approve the golf shamble, with the first one being executed next month, and then after that, later in the fall, or the spring. Any discussion?
I would like to reinforce the proposal, because I play in the one at Schiffer Decker, which is held every third Wednesday. And the shamble, who doesn't know, two people tee off, you take the best drive, and then you play your ball in from there. But when that shamble is over, at Schiffer Decker, there's a sign-up sheet right on the counter, and it's almost filled up. They had almost a full field. So, I think there's one at Peoria Ridge, there's one somewhere else. So, Monday's a perfect day. Nobody does much on Monday. All this old people have nothing to do on Monday. So, I think it'll be really well-accepted. I've talked to a lot of golfers, and they're excited about it, and I think it's a good thing. It's a really good thing.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
All right, item number six. Sally Stewart with Vision Carthage came and presented information that she's going to have another dumpster day on October 4. We need permission to move the event, and it's with the dumpsters this time, rather than being up here on the north end of town, are going to be on the south end of town, down in the Fair Acres area. And they're asking for permission to put the dumpsters there, and at this time, I'd like to make a motion to allow Vision Carthage to have Dumpster Day at Fair Acres, October 4.
Second. I have a motion as second approving Vision Carthage's hosting of another dumpster day on October 4 at Fair Acres. Any discussion? Alan?
I believe what Sally told us the other night was that they're planning on having the dumpsters down in the softball field parking lot, which there is a gate down there to close that parking lot. I know last time, they had some issues
Yeah, she did.
with the dumpsters over here at Memorial Hall. People were coming up and dumping their stuff before it was organized, and so they kind of lost some of their dumpster capacity. So, I think having it down there, where they can close that parking lot gate until it's time to open it, will be good.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Vision Carthage also requested permission to use Central Park on October 10 as a gathering place for volunteers for the Carthage Cleanup Day, so that they can get their assignments as to where they're going to go and what they're going to do. It will be just a little while. It's not going to be an all-day thing, and they just wanted to make sure that they had permission to gather in the Central Park on October 10 to assign those folks and send them out. And I move that we allow the use of Central Park for that purpose.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion as second to allow Vision Carthage to use Central Park as a staging area for their cleanup effort. Any discussion? Alan?
Just a correction. I believe that date is October 11. It's on a Saturday.
Ah, okay.
So.
It could be. I don't have a calendar.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Item seven. Carthage Humane Society and Joplin Roadrunners presented the second annual Souls for Paws charity run to benefit the Carthage Humane Society. No action is needed at this time. They have had to make a change to the date and will re-present to the committee at the next meeting. Item eight. Julie Reams with the Chamber of Commerce presented requests for use of the parks for the upcoming 59th Annual Maple Leaf Festival, and as Alan said, this is already all going to be presented in Resolution 2100, and it's just a lump sum of all the road closings and everything that we normally do, instead of breaking it all out individually. And then item nine. John Skinner presented information regarding the cost share through the Missouri Department of Conservation for the preventive removal of ash trees in the golf course. Mr. Skinner reported that in 2024 tree inventory, they identified 122 ash trees that needed removal due to the insect infestation. And he stated that in order to qualify for the grant, that we have to plant two trees for every one that we remove. And that the city would significantly increase the labor costs of the park staff, because all of the newly-planted trees has to be consistently watered, and they're not in the irrigation system area. So, he recommended scaling back the removals to do it in phases. They're planning on doing 13 trees this year and planning 26 replacements. And because of how this is working, because it's a grant, this does not require any action at this time. It's just information that needs to be known. But by the time they're done with this, Municipal Park and Kellogg Park will no longer have any ash trees. They're going to take them all out.
Okay, thank you.
And the next Public Services Committee meeting will be also, as Alan said, postponed to a later date of September 18. postponed to a later date of September the 18th due to the MML Conference. That's my report.
All right, thank you. Public Works Committee. Derek?
The Public Works Committee is currently in between meetings. Our next meeting will be the first Tuesday of September, which I just added down, and is the second. 5:30 Council Chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we'll entertain reports from special committees and board liaisons. Jack?
Yes, I'd like to report on the CWEP meeting that was held last Thursday. Relative to the other meetings I've held, this was pretty short. But I think a critical thing that I want the citizens of Carthage to be aware of and to be proud of. Carthage is a member of the Missouri Public Utility Alliance Mutual Aid Program. And during the spring storms, I'm going to read the names of the gentlemen, but they volunteered to assist Liberal, Lamar, Monette, and Springfield. Left their families, spent a lot of time away from home, and really allowed Carthage or made Carthage a shining star. These gentlemen, Chance Adams, John Amerschek, Jake Brunert, Scott Dudowski, Tristane Hartman, Jeff Moore, James Pittman, Chris Perry, Justin Ralston, and Noah Smith. And these people are led by Derek Crowe. And there's another important person, Kevin Emery. And I think it's important that the citizens of Carthage realize the magnitude and generosity of this of the CWEP workers. And if you meet these people, be sure and shake their hands and say thank you. It was quite a thing. So there was proclamation. Secondarily, there was a discussion on cybersecurity policy, which is quite detailed. But I'll read the the purpose. The policy establishes CWEP's overarching cybersecurity governance structure. It affirms the board's commitment to protecting CWEP's digital infrastructure and critical services while delegating detailed policy development and implementation to management. This allows CWEP to adapt to emerging threats and technologies while minimizing the need for reported or repeated board action or technical services. Then it goes through there's a scope, policy statement, governance, delegation of authority, compliance of legal requirements, confidentiality, and cold closed records, and review and approval. Now, I asked the question, do they often change their firewalls? And of course, he being a tech guy explained it to me. That's all I know. So. But it's very cybersecurity is extremely important as this gentleman over here understands because hackers are getting really, really sophisticated. So anyhow, that that was that proposal. Then there was a a proposal to a for a mini excavator lease extension for 36 months, which in essence saved the city at $714.47. This is a small equipment, like a Bobcat, I assume?
Yes, sir.
Like and so that they can maneuver, get into places that they can't do with the with the big equipment. So that was approved. There's one about authorization for signatures. I don't think that's but but then in there was a change from interior exterior for electrical upgrades of lift stations. These lift stations are will be at Flexilater, Ford, Precious Moments, and Underground. And it was moved externally due to manpower, I would assume. But the budgeted number was $262,000. The new amount will be $334,539.31. And this will be done by Randy Dubry Construction. So I asked the question, what is normal on lift stations? He said normally it's gravity fed, but these are not gravity fed. They go into a holding point, and then they're pumped up with the sump pump. In essence, they're large sump pumps into piping so that they that they can go to the treatment treatment plant. So that was pretty much it with with the with the board.
Anything else?
No.
Any other board liaisons or special reports? Alan?
The Parks Director Hiring Committee has met and conducted some interviews. We have some more interviews scheduled for tomorrow and Thursday, I believe. And then the Police Chief Hiring Committee will be starting interviews on Thursday.
Thank you. Any other reports? Okay, we'll move on now to my report. Also, the CWEP hosted a well, external source that came in and provided a workshop on the leading of a water utility, which was well-attended by both city to include some council members as well as the the utility senior management. So that was worthwhile. As mentioned by Alan, the hiring committees for both the the department heads are ongoing and moving forward well. I was able to attend at least the initial portion of the McCune Brooks Trust Board Meeting. We did a quite a turnover on the personnel down there to get back in compliance. Joe Ryder is now the the chairman of that board, and that's going very, very well. Also was able to attend the Carthage Economic Development Meeting, which is things are proceeding down there. And it runs a gamut from the hotel committee, the hotel study, as well as the housing study. So work being done there with all the members. We did have a a CWP Board Meeting. As Jack mentioned, I was able to attend that as well. And then last week, for those of you that were not able to attend, Kathy Jo Loy, who of course is our Missouri House District 163 Representative, hosted a Town Hall Meeting down here in the basement of Memorial Hall, which was, I thought, fairly well-attended and very informative and interesting. The topics that were addressed ranged from Second Amendment rights to abortion to term limits, particularly in the federal system, to Proposition A here in the state focused primarily on the sick leave conversation. And then we also discussed illegal immigration and the enforcement of that throughout the county and Carthage. So very well done. She composed herself, I thought, very, very well, took some hard shots, but responded, I think, very professionally, and it was very beneficial. And I got a chance to get the word out there. For those of you that were not available to go last Friday, our chamber, Julie's sitting in the audience here, hosted their annual golf tournament. 25 teams, I believe, were showed up out there. I've got mixed emotions. Carthage, the city of Carthage, put five teams on the on the course. None of them did very well. But I take I take heart in the fact that that means because they normally do their job, they're not on the golf course. So but hopefully, we can put a better team together next year. You'll see tonight the essentially what should be potentially the last tranche of board committees and commission appointments. We've got one renegade board that we're trying to figure out what it does. We truly don't know right now. So we're not going to point anybody to it until we verify its existence and whether or not it's value-added. But the rest of them will be cleaned up with tonight's appointments, and I encourage you to to support that. And finally, arguably most importantly, we do have, we had several different applicants that were interested in serving our city and their communities as the Ward Two Councilperson, trying to keep Ray West from getting lonely over there. And I'm happy to to announce that tonight I will be nominated Gennaro Sifuentes. And Gennaro, if you would please stand up. Gennaro, you've seen his information in the packet. He works over at what used to be Ortho Four States, but it's a Mercy facility now. And I will ask you to support his nomination this evening. I think he'd be a great addition to the council. And if you haven't had a chance to meet him, I encourage you, please, to do so tonight. And assuming that you accept him, we will swear him in at the next session in September. That completes my report, subject to your questions. And we will now move on to reports of council members. And we will start Ron with you.
Out in the business world, I've been talking to them. And really, as a compliment to the whole council and you, Mayor, the public seems to be very pleased in the direction that we're going and what we've been accomplishing each and every day. So that is a plus for both the council and your position. That's all.
Thank you. Alan?
Yeah, I would like to talk about what Ray mentioned with the tree removal and tree planting. I know I'm not nearly as good a golfer as Jack and Derek, but I don't know if I can support any more trees. I have the hardest time hitting around the ones that are currently on the course. So by putting two where there's one, I don't know if I can support that or not, Mr. Mayor. So I'll have to think about that if we if we ever have to make a vote. I'm going to be torn. So I just wanted to
Understand.
point that out. That's all I have tonight.
Beth?
Okay, I don't have any tree or golf stories this evening. So but I just wanted to say that I've been trying to meet with people in parts. I'm still making my way through learning what each of the departments does, and I continue to be very impressed. And I spent the morning with Chuck Bryant and went through really just the whole range of their strategic planning as well as their operations and what they're doing internally. And it was very much appreciated. I also attended with some of the other council members and then with the mayor, the utility financial management workshop, which was, I thought, very well done. And then, excuse me, I also attended the public, the Town Hall Meeting with Representative Loy. And I thought that she was very open and was able to field all the questions that she had with candor and grace. And I certainly appreciated her doing that for the community. And I think other people did too, from what I had heard. And I'm going to be the liaison for the Boots Foundation. And I'm going to be starting to meet with them when they change to the monthly meetings. And I'm going to be meeting with Betsy Flanagan this week about some ideas related to the role of the liaison because they've not had a liaison before since they're new to having a contractual relationship with the city. So.
Thank you. David?
I really don't have anything this evening. I've been gone most of the summer, it seems like. I will be home for a couple of months now, so I should be here for a while.
Okay, great. Jack?
Yes, I want to thank you, Mayor, for your leadership. And I thank the council for the it seemed like we're all together, mostly. But I think it's really important. I when I played golf last Wednesday, there was a gentleman who had friends in St. Louis even mention, what the hell is going on in Carthage? And I said, it's really good. It's a lot better, much better, and it's functioning. Got a guy in Springfield, same thing. How's it going with the council in Carthage? So it's not just a city issue. People in Joplin, Springfield, St. Louis, all around are are interested and want to know. And I congratulate all of you for the current state.
Thank you. Ray?
I just want to thank Julie for all the work that Chamber is doing on the Maple Leaf Festival. It's looking like it's going to be another wonderful event that we look forward to every year. And I appreciate all the work that you and the Chamber have done on it. And as far as Alan goes, the trees that they part planted in Central Park, that's the size they're going to plant, so you can miss them pretty easy.
I'll hit them, Ray.
Is that it, Ray?
That's it.
Thank you.
Well, I don't have a liaison because of it was the Humane Society. So really don't have anything to report on. But I will say that I agree with Jack Perkins on the line scooters. I think they aren't good for us. I I see them being used all the time in ways they should not. And I can't help but wonder when the first lawsuit is going to get because who are they going to sue? They can't find those people, and the only people they can find is us. So I really don't think we get any good out of them. We get bad. I don't see people taking their groceries and going to work or anything like that what they were intended for. They were intended for adults, and I don't see adults using them.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Derek?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to briefly speak on our Ward Two appointee because until recently, I didn't I didn't know that that is who the mayor selected. And Gennaro and I overlap in our work settings a little bit. And I just had to say that it his reputation precedes him in the workplace. The respect that he has garnered and and now commands in his work role is is really something to see. He's extremely involved in in his church and is a very upstanding ethical and moral gentleman. And I think the best part is that I've never seen him have a bad day or not have a positive outlook on even we may be jointly in a in a bad boat, and he still has a positive outlook. So I just wanted to say, like I said, I didn't know until very recently through just a brief discussion with him that he was the appointee. But I would also encourage my colleagues to support that. He would be a great asset for our council. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll now have the miscellaneous reports, the officers of the city. Chad?
Yeah, I got an update on the Blue Shield program. I think you're all aware of what that was. We passed that to begin my part of that a couple of months ago. I really didn't think how big a deal it was until recently when I kind of dove in to what the Blue Shield statewide was. There's approximately 1,300 cities, towns, villages, and counties in the state. Only 200 of them received the Blue Shield program. When we applied, I thought, well, this is easy. Almost to the point where I thought, well, why is not everybody getting this? And we dive into why we were one of the 200 in the state that received this is because of the the city and the police department because it wasn't just crime-related. A lot of it had to do with what the city has to offer. And we were one of those. So it was kind of a really bigger deal than than what I expected to be because I thought, well, why is everybody not like us? They're just not. Our update is we get a six-week window to determine what we want to spend the grant money on. And with when we did the budget this spring, one of the things that we requested was dash cam footage. I think it's really important to have that. It's transparency. It helps the officers. It helps anybody during any encounter with a citizen. With this grant, it's going to help us get potentially, if they accept this request from them, dash cameras for our patrol officers, which is only going to help everybody that's involved in any kind of contact with us.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Jason?
I had a question. What is the Blue Shield program?
So the governor put out last year that he's going to create a Blue Shield program. They put out an amount of money that they were going to set aside. That got approved through the state. And once that, I think it was $10 million, got approved through the state, they then opened it up for every agency in the state of Missouri to apply for it. To to get the Blue Shield program, you had to meet certain criteria, whether it be how many officers you have on the streets, safety, do they wear their vests? Does the city have things that that citizens can get involved in committees and things like that? So all this criteria, and then the government, the governor then selected if they met these certain criteria, which was a very lengthy process. if they met these certain criteria, which was a very lengthy process, they then awarded that city or county or town the Blue Shield program, which just means that we recognize you as a city as achieving goals to set the safety at a high standard for your citizens.
Thank you.
Jason?
Yes, this coming weekend, Liberty Weekend, we're doing our annual NPA Boot Block. Out at Walmart, I want to thank them in advance for allowing us to use their parking lot entry for that. Supposed to be nice weather, so we've had some that were under grease scorches. It's kind of miserable being out on pavement when it's that hot. But we're supposed to have good weather, so we're excited about that. I would disagree slightly with you about the golf outing Friday, because Chad was a member of our police team that actually took first in the A flight. And they did get first place in the A flight. Josiah's team was four strokes better, but they were in the championship. But it was a good time. I thank Julie for putting on a great event for that. I guess that's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you. Josiah?
Yeah, just some quick updates on the current ongoing projects we have. I don't know if anybody's been out around Hazel Avenue and seen, but they finally started making some progress there. It's looking like the road is beginning to take shape. All the curb and gutter got, the last pour, I believe, was done today. So they will begin to start filling in those edges in with material and building that road surface up. The gas company is currently in process of digging the gas line to replace that gas line accordingly, so the project can continue along Airport Drive. They were boring that. They hit enough limestone and rock that they had to end up open trench digging a good majority of that section through there. So that is taking them a little bit longer. Square Project, as you can see, has been very busy. Thanks for being patient. We're trying to get this project done, wrapped up. It's getting close. And close enough that we're starting our punch list to take care of everything, get it all buttoned up. So we do have some grates that are on order right now that will be coming in and covering these open trench areas that you'll see remaining there. And then you'll begin to see some firebed areas put in place. East Chestnut Street, we did, the guys do have that completely dug out. And we're gonna get it cleaned up prior to the rains, hopefully, we get tomorrow, because we really desperately need it. One more thing I wanted to note. Yesterday, I did offer the street superintendent position to Keith Wheat. He did accept. And Keith has served the city for 40-plus years. The knowledge that he has is, you take mine and multiply it by five, and you're probably getting close. It's just tremendous, the amount of knowledge he can spit out at you, that it's not even in our mapping. And he knows about stuff that's not even there. So we're gonna try to take all that bullet out of his brain for the next however long we have him here, throw it into our computers and let him pass on his knowledge to the next guy up. And we're glad to have him, excited about what he's gonna bring to the table. And hopefully, we can plug away for... I'm gonna try to make him stay at least three more years, if I can. But he's really close. He's fun to be around. I'm just excited about that. That's all.
Okay. Tracy?
Thank you. Everything has pretty much been covered, except there was also a CDC meeting last Thursday. The billboard has been installed at the Economic Development Park. And discussions continue on housing needs and the recent hotel study. As far as the Lime scooters, they are scheduled to be picked up in October. And we can reconsider the need for the Lime scooters for the next year after that. Also, the year-end financials have been completed, and the new budget was installed today. So reports will go out tomorrow, and we will finally be good to go in the new fiscal year. Also, I just want to say thank you very much to Angie Judd and Chad Carney and Tyler Markham, because they have really been stepping up to fill... You know, we've got two empty positions at the park. And they've been doing a tremendous job of filling that emptiness out there. So thank you to them for everything that they've been doing to keep the parks and the golf course running. And that's all.
John? All right, we will now have the report of the claims against the city.
The Committee on Claims filed a report in the amount of $2,404,481.42.
I move that we approve the August 26, 2025 claims as presented.
Second? I have a motion as second to approve the August 26 claims as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll now move on to public hearings. Miranda?
The City of Carthage will hold a public hearing tonight during this meeting, right now, at which time citizens may be heard on the property tax rates proposed to be set by the City of Carthage.
Does anyone wish to address the council on the proposed property tax raises? Alan?
Those rates are actually gonna go down, so I don't see how anyone could have anything that want to be upset about.
Okay. Any other? All right. Now we'll move on to old business. Miranda?
The second reading of Council Bill 2551 and ordinance amending the annual operating and capital budget of the City of Carthage for fiscal year 2025-2026 for specified funds, general fund, use tax fund, and public facilities bond fund for carryover projects.
Any discussion? Council bill is passed. Next council bill?
The second reading of Council Bill 2552 and ordinance levying general taxes upon real estate property located within the City of Carthage, Jasper County, Missouri, for the year 2025, for general revenue purposes and other purposes, and fixing the rates thereof.
Any discussion? Council bill passes. Next council bill?
The second reading of Council Bill 2553 and ordinance authorizing the City of Carthage, Missouri, to enter into a sub-agreement with the Southwest Missouri Joint Municipal Water Utility Commission regarding reallocated water storage space in Stockton Lake.
Any discussion?
Did you vote, Jack? Did you save it?
Well, my thumb said I voted, but I'm sure.
Council bill passes. Next council bill?
The second reading of Council Bill 2554 and ordinance amending Chapter 2, Chapter 18, and Chapter 21 of the Carthage City Code. And this was the one to remove the Powers Museum and then amend the Police Personnel Board and the Tree Board.
Any discussion? Cast your votes. Council bill passes. Next council bill?
The second reading of Council Bill 2555 and ordinance to amend the Personnel Policy Manual of the City of Carthage, Missouri. And this was to amend the Personnel Board.
Any discussion? Council bill passes. Next council bill?
The second reading of Council Bill 2556 and ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Carthage and Jasper County regarding the use and distribution of opioid settlement funds for the Jasper County Jail Treatment Program.
Any discussion? Cast your vote. Council bill passes. Next council bill?
The second reading of Council Bill 2557 and ordinance to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests for certain municipal officials.
Any discussion?
I asked this question before. What is the... I mean, and Alan answered it. I thought when we applied to be a councilman, we signed something. So now it's a two-year deal or what's it?
So we have to do this every two years, or you have to fill out an entire questionnaire thing and submit it to the Missouri Ethics Commission to say that you don't have any conflict of interest, that you're not a business owner that's doing business with the city and those types of things.
Okay, so we're only doing this every two years?
We do that every...
Every year? Okay.
But as far as any time you're filing for a seat, to run for a seat, you have to sign a disclosure statement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Council bill passes. Next council bill?
The second reading of Council Bill 2558 and ordinance amending Chapter 7, 17, Article 3, Section 17-37, Members of the Carthage City Code. And this is the change to the Board of Adjustment for their living restrictions.
Any discussion? Cast your votes. Council bill passes. We'll now move on to new business. Miranda?
The first reading of Council Bill 2559 and ordinance to amend Section 202 Drug-Free Workplace of the Personnel Policy Manual of the City of Carthage.
Derek?
I would just briefly note for the council, this came out of our CIAC meeting two weeks ago. And this was the combination of John and Mr. Miller, Mr. Gold and Mr. Miller, updating our drug-free workplace manual. A couple of areas were maybe outdated or not up to compliance. So this brings all of that into compliance with the state. So just a quick note there. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Michael, anything to add? All right, moving on. Mayor's appointments?
So the mayor's appointment of Gennaro Sepuentes for Ward Two council member until April 2026.
Alan?
I move we accept the mayor's appointment. Second?
I have a motion as second to accept the appointment of Gennaro Sepuentes to be the Ward Two council member. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? He is appointed. He will be sworn in at the next city council meeting, so congratulations. All right, next one?
The rest of them are the mayor's appointments to the Police Personnel Administration Board. These are new appointments of Cassandra Ludwig until January of 2028 and Doris Paxter until December of 2028. And then to the Zoning Board of Adjustments, he's appointing Alyssa Hess until April of 2028. I move we accept the mayor's appointments to the Police Personnel Board and the Zoning Board of Adjustments.
Second?
I have a motion as second to accept the appointments to the Police Personnel Board and the Zoning Board of Adjustments. Any questions or discussion? Jack?
How many members are on this board?
Which board are you talking about?
Police Personnel Board. How many members are there?
Police Personnel Board's got four. Any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appointments are approved. Thank you. Moving on to resolutions?
Resolution 2099, a resolution providing for the formal acceptance of a donation from M&M Recker to the Carthage Police Department for an eight-foot-by-five-foot metal utility trailer by the City Council of the City of Carthage, Missouri.
Any discussion? Cast your votes?
I move we adopt Resolution 2099. Second?
A motion as second? Any other discussion? Resolution adopted. Next resolution?
Resolution 2100, a resolution authorizing city support and permissions for several programs of the 59th Annual Maple Leaf Festival in the City of Carthage, Missouri.
Alan?
I move we adopt Resolution 2100.
I overwhelmingly second.
We have a motion as second to adopt Resolution 2100. Any discussion? Alan?
I will say, just based on all the events and road closures, it looks like it's gonna be as big or bigger than ever. So thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Cast your votes? Resolution is adopted. All right, we'll now move on to closing comments. The only closing comment that I have is I've been questioned by several people as why my portrait isn't hanging in here somewhere yet. And I will tell you that the photographer's been up here several times. And not surprising to my wife or my kids, he is unable, has been unable, to find a good side. So we will continue to try to make something happen, but I don't know how soon it's gonna occur. But thank you for your concern. And that completes my closing comments. Beth? I'll start with you.
Okay. Well, I'd like to welcome Gennaro to the council. I think that's gonna be great. And we're gonna learn together, as I told him. So we may team up on some additional meetings. Yeah, and I too would like to echo. I mean, the Maple Leaf Festival does not happen without a lot of magic and a lot of hard work. Anyway, but I know there's a lot of other people behind you that you count on to make that work, and that takes real leadership. So thank you.
Alan?
So I want to congratulate the police department. I had not heard that they were accepted into the Blue Shield program. I think that speaks very highly of not only the police department, but all of our organizations here in Carthage. We continue to be recognized at the state level for the superior people who run the departments, the employees, what they do and how they do it. So this is the latest one. Congratulations to the police department for that. Congratulations on your big win yesterday, or last Friday, at the Chamber Golf Outing. I understand that the Fire Department did win the Battle of the Badges for the blood donation. So I want to congratulate Chief Martin and the Fire Department for that. Great job giving blood. I want to congratulate tonight. I believe we had all of the members that are present able to vote, and it was able to come up on the screen. Miranda didn't have to have any thumbs up, thumbs down. So, man, we are getting things done, and we're moving forward with the council. I want to say also that I appreciate all of the time that I've had the opportunity to serve with you. I believe that it's getting better and better, and we're getting stronger every week. So just want to thank you all for that. Lastly, I just want to wish everybody Happy Labor Day this weekend. Enjoy the weekend. The weather's supposed to be beautiful. And have a hot dog or hamburger for me. So that's all tonight.
Thank you. Ron?
Again, I want to welcome Mr. Gennaro.
Again, I want to welcome Mr. Gennaro. Is that pronounced properly? And I'm kind of disappointed. On the last council before here, when I was on before, I had the reputation of being able to vote no. I haven't had an agenda yet that I've been able to vote no on. I think we're making some good progress. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Derek?
I would just also like to welcome Gee to the council. I think he'll be a great asset, and I was going to make a note earlier, without interrupting, how great it was that everything ran smooth on the iPad, so agreed, we are moving and shaking now. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
I just want to say welcome to Mr. Gennaro, too. It's good to have him going to sit in this chair next, so, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and John, and everybody that works hard for the city, because there's a lot of work goes on to keep our city running like this.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Ray?
I've already spoken with Mr. Sifuentes, and I appreciate you, and I look forward to having you over here also. And for Allen and Jack, I'm sure you've both already heard this, I used to play golf until I physically am not able to anymore, and trees are only 90% air.
Is that E-R-R-O-R, air?
A-I-R.
Anything else, Jack? Or Ray?
No, thank you.
Okay. Jack?
I would congratulate Mr. Sifuentes. He speaks fluent Spanish, as does my wife, so it'll be a welcome addition to our council. Looking forward to working with him. And a week from today, I'm having my thumbs amputated.
David?
That's all. Welcome to our new councilman, and hopefully the weather's nice, and we all have a nice weekend, and I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I have a motion to second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.